Good evening to everyone. Called the July 12th. City of Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order.
Let's go with the July 15th.
Oh, did I say 12? You might have replied. Now's about to post it. July 15th. City of Mount Vernon Council Meeting to Order. Thank you Scotty. Not aware of any changes to the agenda that we have in front of us.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Real quick. The item number seven. Engagement letter with Spirit Financial. Should have been engagement letter with Spirit Financial and Allers Cooney. So you got both of them in front of you. Allers Cooney does the legal paperwork.
This is under the motions for.
Yes, number seven.
Do we need to add anything to that or is it just.
Like I said, it should state both of them. It should be Allers Cooney and.
Spirit Financial.
And Allers. Yep.
I move to approve the agenda with that. Allers Cooney had two, seven and J.
Awesome, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Next items. Communications. Anybody that would like to address the council? Come forward to the line please.
J Delante, five oh nine Scobie Road. I wanted to talk to you guys last time, but I didn't make it in time. Is there any chance the, I've heard, I mean, the city has looked at church out by us on Scobie and Mount Vernon Road? And possibility of moving the city hall and all the city work type stuff to there? And then let this whole building become a police department so we don't have to spend a lot of money? And so, because that has a lot of ground, a lot of parking. And I think it would look really nice with like a Mount Vernon City Council or Mount Vernon City Hall light. And then two, there's so much land in front of it. You guys could put up flags for each of the branch of services and displays honorably towards veterans and even police and fire department and plenty of land to put memorials and make it look nice. And I was just curious. Can the city lease property, you know, like offices in that building to make funds? Is it possible?
To answer your question, we can't lease. That's about all I can tell you right now.
Okay. Because I always thought when people use this building to leave, this basement, do they lease it? Or do they just get to use it? You know those Christmas bizarre things?
There's a rental agreement. We could. We could lease out space if we wanted to.
See, I'm also looking away making money to keep up and all that type of stuff. But has the city looked at paying for that at all?
Can't tell you anything else, Jay.
Really? Because I've walked around it and it's pretty built pretty nice. And I think they're, I'm going to be blind, they're crazy what they think they're going to get for it. And I think the city can get it for a lot less. I don't know who's going to buy a church for almost $500,000. But what will it become otherwise? You know, I don't understand. And I don't think anybody will live there as a home. You know what I mean? But you're saying, Chris, you and I'd be neighbors. We'd eat lunch together, walk our dogs. Have a beer on a Friday. That'd help, man.
How keep that money? Make some more of that money.
Don't forget our little neighbor, you have invited him too.
Yeah. Well, my daughter and his daughter are hanging out all the time now. I don't know what's going on there. Anything, I don't know. It's a soft one.
That's a good thing.
I know, it's a good thing. Between him and me, not them. But I'm just putting that out there. I'm sure some people have been thinking about it, but I just think it is. It's a lot of land too that beautify and put stuffs out of history and. And then two, with the Legion move there? Since it's down here? Can't say? Because I thought there was an agreement on that when this place burned down back in seventy-five.
Yes, there's an arrangement here.
Yeah.
And certainly if we looked at something else, we'd have to consider that because of the arrangement.
Because I'm just saying, it'd make a nice Legion type, one of the sections of it. Because it's a big building.
Yeah, it's a big building.
You've never walked through it. Go walk through it. It's something else. There's even a gymnasium in there, Chris.
There is.
That's.
I was in it back in the eighties.
Yep. I'm just putting that out there. Thanks outside the box.
Thanks, Jay. Anybody else? All right, otherwise we'll move on to Lynn County. I'm going.
Sure. Please come forward. Good evening. Luke Maloney, building official from Lynn County. We just kind of wanted to come in front of you, probably on a biannual basis unless you guys want to see us more often. But just kind of do a brief rundown of the permit numbers and give you a little update on our permit process. To date, I believe we have twelve new houses, single-family dwellings, four dwelling additions. And I believe there was twenty alterations or repairs. Commercial's been steady with the schools and the wellness center. And Cornell has, we have two projects going on right now. So the West Science Building, I believe, is being remodeled. And then they were redoing a classroom, removing a wall. Unless you have any more questions on the permits, I didn't.
Yeah, I don't think so. It's pretty. Real stuff.
Another thing I want to bring up is we have the nine sidewalk and nine utility permits today. Where we are the, I believe we call it a fiscal broker or something like that. We take in the fee and then we refund the city. Just kind of wanted to see if there was any feedback or.
No, actually, like I said, I think the arrangements have worked fairly well. We have a few people stopped in from time to time just to ask about permits. But I hear no bad reports. They just, once they get the information, they contact Lynn County. So I'm just ecstatic about the twelve homes since January one, so.
Yeah. Great.
From what I'm hearing, that's going to go up.
Yep, sounds like it.
And on that note, with increasing business, we had to kind of change with the times a little bit. As of August first, we will be taking in digital plans and online permit applications. So you won't have to come down to our office. That would be nice. Kind of a pain in the neck to get organized and get, you know, efficient, but we're close, so.
Excellent. Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Is there still the option for hard copy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's either or. All right, cool.
That's really all I had for you, but.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, excellent.
This is good information. I enjoy getting.
Yeah, me too.
You get to get some more.
Just nice to see it.
Absolutely.
And the fact that it's multiple, multiple pages.
Well, and that's the thing, especially with all the developments that we do have going on. Sometimes people do ask, where are we with those? How are things coming along? So the ability to say since January, we've had twelve now. You know, I can't say their locations X, Y, and Z. But, you know, just knowing that yes, there's movement along the way. So thank you very much.
And if there's any, any other data you guys would like, I mean, we can collect almost anything through reports in our system. So we just need to know what that is. And it might take us a little bit to figure out how to generate the report, but we can get her done, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
All right, that's on top of the agenda approval of council minutes from our July one meeting. And approval of liquor license for Cal State's cafe.
I have to do the minutes and final issues, so I will move for approval of the agenda.
Agreed, so I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Next one carries. All right, next few items is something we do quite frequently, but we have to do each one one at a time, correct, Chris?
Yeah, items one through four, unless you want me to talk about them. These are routine resolutions that we do at the beginning of every year, especially the signatories at the bank. But the, the fund transfers, we always start at the beginning of the year when we're transferring monies to depreciation accounts and then gearing up for our first bond payment, so.
As I said, pretty routine, but something has to be done. So first one, resolution seven fifteen twenty nineteen A. Approving the fiscal year twenty twenty transfers.
I move to approve resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen A. Second.
Comments? Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
West? Yes. Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Robert Bush?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen P. Establishing depositories of public funds of Mount Vernon Bank and Trust.
I move approval of resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen B.
A second.
Comments?
Some questions. Should I stay in this, Chris? Do you have eyes on that or? No.
Roll call please, Sue.
Herman? Yes. Robert Bush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West? Yes. Lisa?
Yes.
All right, next one, resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen C. Establishing depositories of public funds of Bill Bank and Trust Company.
I move to approve resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen C.
Second.
Roll call please, Sue.
Robert Bush?
Yes.
West? Yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Next one, resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen D. Establishing depositories of public funds of Bridge Community Bank.
So move for resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen D.
Second.
Roll call please, Sue.
Rose?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
West?
Yes. Herman?
Yes.
Robert Bush?
All right, next item, resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen D. Fixing date for a meeting on the proposition to authorize a loan agreement and issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
This is not a new borrowing. This is an old borrowing under an old program, Build America Bonds, which we sold these as taxable bonds. We've reached a point now in their maturity where we can more or less reorganize the debt, reissue the debt. So we're going to do that in non-taxable general obligation and go through the process again. The whole idea behind the Build America Bonds was that the federal government would essentially subsidize the interest rate of these bonds. It's kind of a way to generate new money flowing in at a time when the economy needed it. But those funds have been cut annually. And so when we initially started this program, we're getting significantly more money back from the federal government than what we are today. We believe that this is going to continue. So now's the time to probably get out of these and get the normal general obligation debt.
Between what we're no longer necessarily taking in from the originally planned subsidies, basically, and the interest, I mean, do we end up upside down on these or is this basically a wash?
No, it's a wash. We paid initially higher interest payments because they were taxable bonds. So I think the interest was over five two. You know, the last bond issuance we. Yeah. So, so we want, and, and we've been talking about this with Spirit Financial for the last three years. Just trying to pick the right time.
This has been Spirit's.
Yeah. To, to get to there. And we're finally there. I mean, Maggie said that she, you know, obviously wouldn't bring this to us if we were going to get upside down on them. But now I really, I said it just, we could get upside down on them in the future should the subsidies decrease even further. Because then we're paying five percent on bonds. I mean, we could probably pay three percent.
Gotcha.
Does this impending rate cut affect us at all? Would it be wise to wait for that or?
No, different.
Different.
Interest. In the bond market, because these are, so we're going to go for a rating again. Go through that process again. And the expectation is we should have enough bidders on this. Once again, we should seek favorable interest rates. So, and it's still longer, I think it's still ten plus years that we have on these, these notes. So I don't think it's really going to move the needle, one way or the other.
And does moving this from basically column A to column B in our debt service change our rating at all?
Uh, no.
Because it's still two point three.
Debt is still a debt. Actually, this may help it just because the interest rate will likely increase.
Okay.
What are the fees to refinance the.
Um, that's J seven.
Call the SC.
Um, the, the bad part about this is we have to pay the attorney. We have to pay the financial advisor. So ran total, it's like eleven to twelve thousand between the two entities to get this reprocessed. So, I mean, it's, it's, again, why we were waiting for it to get there is a significant amount of money.
Four hundred and three, what, two point three? About three point difference.
Yeah. Yes.
Much more than the cost of the refinance.
We're not voting on whether to do it. We're just voting for some hearing.
Correct. Yeah. It'll be one of the five, five vote items once again.
I'll make the motion to approve the August fifth hearing date.
I'll second.
Comments? Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Lisa?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Robert Bush?
Yes.
West?
Yes. Herman?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen A. Approving the furniture bid for the Lester Burris Family Community Loans Center project. You're looking at probably a hundred dollar contract.
Yes. So we had a hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred set aside. And in your packet, you had a total bid of one oh eight, seven thirty-one, eighty-six. The caveat to that was that if you see the page where we have the two yellow marked in the same, it's because we took portions of each of their bids. We knew the day that we opened the bids that these numbers may change because both companies would have to agree to us taking half of their bid essentially. And OPN four warned us that they may have discounts in these numbers, but they will not honor, that they only get half of the bid. When they went back to each of the organizations, that was what happened. Neither side honored the discount. So those prices, Phelan's went up from seven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars to nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And then Pigots went from seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents to seven thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and forty cents. So on the other side of that, you will see the recommendation. Phelan's total bid package was fifteen thousand three ninety-four twenty-one. So on the backside of that, you're seeing one yellow square. And that's because we decided to give the entire amount to Phelan's. Now, that does change our bid amount to one hundred and nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. So there's a thousand dollar difference.
So it's, so we've got the two on the front.
Yes.
And then decided to not go with two.
Correct. We decided not to split the two.
So Pigots, despite the poorly named business, is not getting any.
Not any portion of the forms and services that will go to Phelan's.
Okay.
But you'll notice, so each one of the, the, the packages, I mean, with the exception of office elements who didn't bid at all, and story ten where the, the other four will have a small portion of this.
Something, yeah. So the total is the one oh nine, one sixty seven.
Correct. And the earmark for the dollar amount that was set aside was one twenty-two five.
Always nice when they come in here.
Yeah.
What are, so we've got the different businesses down, let Phelan's and whatnot. Across the top, or Katie, do you have this?
Those are the various brands.
Okay.
Of the furnishings that were.
Gotcha.
So these are tables, chairs, magazine racks, benches.
Desk chairs, just the whole.
Yeah, the whole office furniture. So all of the interior and exterior furnishings are in this.
Gotcha.
It always blows my mind how expensive a chair and a table is.
Right now.
It's like an office setting, just.
I mean, can't we just take a truck to Ikea and call it a day?
It would be a whole surface.
I'd like to say.
There's not enough Allen wrenches in the work. Oh, absolutely not. They all look like this chair.
Nick would probably run me out of town.
That's the best case scenario.
That's good though, that's nice.
Yeah. Well, in that case, I would move approval of the bids in the amount totaling one hundred nine thousand one hundred sixty dollars, seventy-five cents for office furniture and whatnot for the Lester Burris Family Community Loans.
A second.
Comments? Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
West?
Yes. Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Robert Bush?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
All right. Next item, resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen D. Approving the purchase of park space within the Spring Meadow Heights subdivision as designated flat of survey number two, three, three, seven to the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa.
The purchase price will be seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars plus fees. That is actually slightly less than what Scobin paid for the property. But we agreed, there's two road extensions that are one lot long that would go into Lisbon eventually. And we have more or less allowing Scobin not to put those in. So they've cut the price down on some park property because we don't know if and when Lisbon will develop their property. So there's no point in having infrastructure sit out there in the title. So it was kind of a win-win for both parties. But again, we've been talking about this. Overall, the city will have in that area, close to, between eight and nine acres because this is, this is our modern detention as well. So it'll be a nice L, but for the most part, the area by the road tracks will be our, our new soccer fields and whatever else Matt can come up with out there.
And I might have missed it, but in the eventuality that we do want to connect with Lisbon there, who is responsible for it?
The city wouldn't have to pay those costs for that extension. It's one lot long. Chances are we wouldn't extend water and sewer unless we had some formal agreement that we don't have in place right now. We could. So it would just be the street extension.
And if Lisbon's coming in, maybe their contractor would just say.
More than likely, we would probably approach their contractor who was doing the work and just have them finish that, that portion up for us. The right of way will be there and we have the ability to do it. But again, having a street sit idle for potentially, you know, five to twenty years, does us a little good.
Yeah.
So I have a question. In the details of the resolution, it says in the amount of seventy-eight, eight one eight plus costs. And in your notes, under this analysis, it says seventy-four, eight one eight.
I'll have to verify upstairs. Haven't by email. You can do those not to exceed seventy-eight, BP two, and I'll verify it with the.
Can I say as well?
Okay. All right. Given that, I move to approve resolution, resolution seven dash fifteen dash twenty nineteen G with a total not to exceed seventy-eight thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars plus cost.
A second.
Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Robert Bush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to motions for approval, consideration of claims list. Any other questions? I don't have anything on motion. I didn't see anything jump out. Anybody else do?
I'm going to approve the claims list.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Discussion consideration of pay application number seven for the Lester Burris Family Community Loans Center project.
OPN has signed off. Received that email today on the seven hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent pay application. Still a little bit behind schedule, but you can see the progress going up. All the pre-casts have been hung and they're starting to pour track in, in interior flooring. So that's getting there. The dry weather has helped immensely.
Do you have any additional questions?
Do you have any guess on finish date?
Uh, oh gosh.
Somebody had to ask.
I'm shooting to be open before Christmas, but we'll see.
Pretty pessimistic guess.
Yeah, you know, we are getting to, we are reaching a point where we have to, to put some dates out there because as we work together with Tenno on the marketing and things like that, that we have to put a date. But I did talk to the architects today and my only marching order to everybody involved is they do not want to stick an arbitrary date out there that we can't. I think that will do more damage.
And we don't want to put a rush on them either.
So I don't want to sacrifice quality. There, there's plenty of heat being applied, so they're definitely. But I will say this, Jeff from Garland wants nothing more than to get this building done as quickly.
Let's get out of town.
As easily as possible as well. So it, it's not a situation where they're dragging their feet. It's just, it's been an unfortunate circumstance and so.
I make motion to pay, to follow through on pay application number seven for the Lester Burris Family Community Loans.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Next one, discussion consideration of price, electric proposal for lighting repairs on the Highway one and Highway thirty roundabouts.
Nick would correct me as I talk about this, but I believe five of the seven are out with the construction that was going on. Were no different than any other utility. We have to move on to the seventh, Alliance or Meadum or anybody else. I don't like this, but Price Electric was already in town. Been happy with their work. The cost they're proposing to, to make the adjustments and corrections is eight thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. In the future, this may be something that we take a look at and figure out if we want to replace these so that Alliance will maintain them in there. Right now, we're.
How do we do that?
You have to put in an Alliance approved light initially.
Okay. Which is probably has a greater cost associated with it.
Well, not necessarily. It's, it's, it wouldn't be no different than our subdivisions if we deviate from what Alliance will approve and have them put some really fancy light and then we own that light. Even though they look good in the time being, it's, it's a risk that I would rather restock them.
Sure.
Yeah. But in this instance, we chose lights that we.
Yeah. I don't have history on that construction. I just know that as that whole project, we own that Highway one roundabout lighting, a lot of the tenth avenue roundabout lighting. So that's all private utilities. We have maps on water, sewer, everything else. And this was kind of overlooked in the construction process for the underground utilities. So it's one thing where we might look at adding that to our GIS maps already. So in the future, when we get one called, we know that those are private utilities. But honestly, I think it's kind of an anomaly because it's not too often that the DOT is going to come through your town and do something like this. Most of our private utilities are on trails or in the parks. And typically, we're the ones doing that project. So we're very aware of where those are. So it was kind of an oversight and an education for us as the DOT came through. So they actually told us if the wire was about one foot higher, they were going to make us replace it anyway because of, they're lowering the road. And just like, if we would do a project down, we did Third Avenue for instance, and we told MediaCom, hey, your wire's too high. It was on them to come in and lower that wire underneath our road. So they kind of treat us just like a private utility, so.
Okay.
I sent a note to, Chris, I was at the Mount Vernon baseball game last week and there was a group of about four or five individuals that were talking, not so much about this, but about this, saying that we were putting stoplights in because the roundabouts weren't working.
Chris, you'll. Can you imagine the level of confusion that would create? We just ran.
Well, I think the unfortunate part is, is there are lights coming with the on and off ramps. You know, that's the unfortunate part is, is, it's just, it all falls back to timing. But that's going to affect traffic patterns as well. We've been holding off on making some of the improvements, obviously, around about as well because it's, you know, it's all going to change. And the last indication, the DOT said that we could potentially be driving on that this fall. So unfortunate, so. Yeah, I'm asking everybody to have patience. None of those decisions have been discussed. If there are any questions, please contact City Hall. Yeah, there. Yeah, there's going to be some changes out there soon now. That one fell in the open.
I actually heard from the DOT people around town or one of the contractors out there said that it's interesting that they're going to tear off the roundabout now. Everyone thinks we're tearing out the roundabout. So that's definitely not the case.
Squawk a little bit. Park a nozer out there and just see what happens.
The DOT's had plenty out there.
Headline and not tearing out the roundabout.
Yeah.
With that, I would move approval of the proposal from Price Electric for replacement of the lights at the Highway one and thirty roundabout in total of eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is discussion consideration of moving the September second, twenty nineteen council meeting date.
Normally I wait, like I said in my report, but the bond council will need the date. So you've done two, you've either gone on the Tuesday following or the Wednesday following, so. It's nice of you ruining it on my birthday.
Tuesday works for me.
Yeah, it doesn't matter for me either. You're reading your call.
Tuesday?
Yep.
Of William Church night?
Yep, going to work.
Okay. I would move that we amend the September second, twenty nineteen city council meeting to Tuesday, September third, twenty nineteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of sewer camera purchase.
Eight thousand scheduled for this, we had eight thousand for this and eight thousand for a boring mole. I think we're going to put the boring mole on hold. We just don't do enough boring underneath our right-of-way. So the cameras, ninety-eight hundred dollars, we would utilize this more frequently. Right now, we have to contact Roto-Rooter to come in. And we will still have to contact Roto-Rooter in various instances. But there are times, especially with our storm sewers, we've got some places where we've got sinkholes kind of popping up that we'd love to have a camera that we wouldn't have to necessarily call Roto-Rooter in, just to stick a camera down there and see what's going on first so we can kind of get a rough idea of it. Just wanted to let you know that we probably spent slightly more than what was estimated in the CFP.
What does it cost for Roto-Rooter to come do that for us?
Depending on what truck they bring out and what equipment we have them using. Typically, if they're coming out here to camera, we're also probably jetting something. So you're talking four hundred to, well, three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty hours an hour for them when they start, when they start traveling with that truck. So.
They have at least two hours.
Hands up quick.
It does have to be so.
So it sounds like we could easily retrieve this ninety-eight a year.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, our goal is, you know, we'll get blockages around town that, you know, it's a four-inch line and we just want to take a quick look. We still may have to call Roto-Rooter to come out and jet it, but the goal would be, hey, we know it's something that we have to jet, or maybe this is actually a homeowner's issue. You know, we'd be able to go down the main. Two hundred feet's not a long ways, but you're pushing it, so that's quite a bit, that's a long ways to push it. So some of our storm sewers, we get frequent calls about, you know, something starting on the shoulder that's taking a bunch of sand or gravel and a homeowner will say, hey, I'm constantly putting dirt in this hole. What's going on? And typically now, we just dig it up and say, okay, now what's going on here? We're hoping that we're able to go in the storm sewer and say, okay, there's a crack here. We can see this, or water's infiltrating here. So some of these things that we should be able to do in a storm sewer and just always call.
Can't say I haven't digged down to figure.
Yeah, or call Roto-Rooter or guessing, so.
Yeah, storm sewer intakes are a nice two-person job, which is kind of what we like to do. But a two-person job on a storm sewer can turn into a five-person job by the time you have to tear up the streets. So I'm going to go and look, and there's a couple instances on Palisades right now where we've got some undermining, some dirt being sucked in probably to our pipe. We can stick this camera down there and make sure that we don't have this pipe collapsing somewhere underneath our street and then getting into a project that's probably, you know. And more or less becomes kind of a timing issue. So if we think that we're going to do a two-man storm intake and it turns into shutting the street, now we've, it's just not inconvenient to homeowner and residents. We try to do it as fast as we can. So it can kink a lot of our projects. It just makes sense for, say, ninety-eight hundred dollars. It doesn't make sense to have Roto-Rooter come out in that situation because we're not necessarily dealing with a blocked pipe, but it sure would be nice not to play guessing games where they can get up.
Need a motion?
Yep.
Making motions for the purchase of a sewer camera at the revised quoted price of ninety-eight hundred dollars.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, discussion consideration of purchasing equipment for generator repair.
I didn't get a firm number on this. I'm going to have you wait. I can't tell you that we've got a generator and it's going to be expensive if it needs repairs.
We're going to hold off on this.
Well, out of my payment approval, so. But yes, I do want to get you some more firm numbers before you take action on it.
Do you need a marshal to take one?
Yes, please.
So moved.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, discussion consideration, consideration of engagement with Spirit Financial, Knowledge Company for real America Vowing to Refinance.
So this will actually be, somebody in my mouth, right, fourteen thousand dollars between the two. So fifty-nine hundred, give or take. Spirit Financial has three tenths of one percent. Per security is over a million dollars. And then Holler's Co. is eighty-one hundred dollars for this. Again, it will be well worth it for the life of this remaining bond and the interest that we're likely going to save. Just a motion to approve the engagement of Holler's Co. and Spirit Financial.
I'll move approval of acceptance of the letter of engagement between City Hall and Spirit Financial and Holler's Co.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next items, reports. Mount Vernon Police Report. Chief, anything to highlight for the council, sir?
Nothing additional on the report. Just kind of give you an update. Urges days for us was a great success, very quiet, which is good for us. Really no incidents uptown. We had one drunk driver Saturday night, but that was it. That's pretty typical, so good stuff. I did indicate I was.
Did you review that to anything? Was there anything different?
No, I mean, increased traffic. We, you're expecting that with the increase in numbers of people to come. There's been several urgent days where we're getting three, four, five drunk drivers during the event, stuff like that. So great weather, great people, and everybody I saw was having a great time. Everything went really well from that standpoint, so. And I am supporting our K-9 shirts for you guys to see. We are selling these for twenty-five dollars as a fundraiser for Monster, kind of all-year ongoing type of fundraiser that we can do to go through, remember we partnered with One Mission, so they're providing for us. And they're on their website. They're going, we can do them. I don't know if we get them on the city website, probably, but you get them through the police department, cash check or credit, any credit card, any of those options are available.
And we have. Monster was well received Saturday night when he was walking.
Yeah, he was most interested in people walking by with food in their hand and stuff like that. Pursued. There was, yeah, there was a few there. He was up there both nights towards the end and did a great job. He was definitely a draw towards the end, and everybody was walking up that end. He got a lot of attention and loved every bit of it, so it was good.
Good. Very good. Thank you.
Next item, Mount Vernon Police Report. Nick, anything you want to highlight for the council?
Uh, nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions?
I have one quick question that's not at all in relation to your report.
Oh, perfect.
No, and it's just, I saw it on the way up here. There's a random street, city Mount Vernon blockage.
Barricade.
Barricade, thank you. On Sixth and Sixth, right across from my house.
Uh, most likely, we had a tree fall down there Sunday night.
Okay.
So we just failed to remove that.
It just, yeah, it's just one. It's not even like wide enough to block the street or, okay, I'm just curious.
Is it still at the street or something?
Yeah. I'll go throw that on the curb.
Okay. And also. Well, I can do it when I get home.
Where are we with that, the well? I guess I never got it up there, so we had a problem with the well. Oh, on a.
One of them was out or something?
One of the.
Well, Southern, yeah, in Bryant Park.
Yeah.
Yes, they had pulled the well.
Yes, it's being repaired right now. We've turned it over to insurance, like I said, we believe it will likely extract itself.
So how many are we running right now?
We haven't. Yeah, the, we haven't had to resort to the one well that we've had shut off, so. Might need even another three or four days.
Anybody else have any questions for it?
Thanks.
Well, sure, to argue it or whatever, maybe it was obvious.
Oh, no. We just turned it in. We'll see. They wouldn't be doing their job if they didn't argue.
So this might be a question as much for Matt, too. New heater in the pool and is everything going okay with that?
Yeah, plus water. We're, we have the concrete pad for it for the chemical wells to move. We'll work with the contractor and get the walls up and new rock so we can get the chemicals swept away. Our hope is too, we've kind of changed how the line that we draw the chemical out fits in the tanks so less fumes come off the acid barrels. Some of those little things were still in the meantime help, so.
Anybody else have anything? Next next.
Thank you.
Matthew, Mount Vernon Parks and Rec Report. Anything for the council?
Nothing to add, but stop pulling me. They don't want me to speak, but there was one portion on there about the Trail Nature Park.
I saw that.
Plans in there. We've decided to come back August first. We're modifying a couple things, so we'll come back August first with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, move on, reports. Mayor's report, as Chief mentioned, Urges Days, I think, was awesome. Weather was great, numbers were fantastic. My wife Jenny is in charge of Urges Days. So far, the numbers are looking fantastic. They sold, obviously beer is the big moneymaker for them, and they sold quite a bit more beer than they did last year. Lost a little bit of money on the ride, but they were perfectly fine.
A little bit?
I think it was like three hundred bucks at the end of the end, so.
Because we were committed to ten grand, right?
Yep, yep. That's what we had to pay just from Michelle Lo, was flat ten dollars and so. Sounds like they'll know more by tomorrow or Wednesday as they're crushing all the final numbers.
First year, I'm coming back.
Yep, yep.
I know your wife was saying she was hoping for five grand.
Yeah, they were thrilled that it worked out as well as it did, so. And obviously thanks to.
Trudeau's to the community.
To that group for sure, as well as obviously Chief and Nick for their teams, because they spend a lot of time up there as well, so.
Oh, that does remind me, Nick had a suggestion for Sunday morning, seven AM. And I think that's a really good idea. Instead of having the crews having to come back that night.
Fight the foot traffic.
Yes, yeah. Sorry, I didn't think of it till.
Your meeting, Nick.
Somebody's getting jealous all over the place.
I know, right? Sorry about this tonight.
You think they're talking about the family wellness Sunday, didn't get his time and.
We should invite Matt back up. No, one of our thoughts was maybe six AM or seven AM Sunday morning. But we've been kind of throwing it back with Chief and Chris here. Just not, you know, maybe we have to communicate well with the church groups that have come up here for Mass and making sure we're not interrupting that as well. I did have a fear, though, that, you know, at six AM, maybe the only thing left up here is just our staff. When at midnight, we have quite a few volunteers still left to help get some of that facilitated. But maybe most of it will be cleaned up other than our barricades, so.
You might have, you still might have volunteers that would come in.
Well, we may. Just one of the, you know, one of the fears with moving some of those barricades, we have quite a bit of heavy equipment up here and there's a lot of foot traffic getting down.
Yeah, yeah.
Just kind of looking at that and.
There's still kind of a lot of people that hang out around.
Yeah.
And Chief, is there any concern, like, you know, when you're ending a party and you start turning all the lights on and the music off and that breaks it up, does this have some of that same effect? And maybe people stick around longer? I don't know, just.
So generally, the band stops at midnight. They linger in the street until twelve-thirty, twelve-forty-five, and then we try to shove them back into the bars so that everybody else can get, vendors can get all their trailers and everything out of there, kind of facilitating the process, and they come into bars and they'll close the bars at two o'clock. We usually walk through with them about one forty-five and then push everybody out. Usually by two-thirty, you know, you'll get, most people, once they're coming out of the bars at two o'clock, most of them are, they're waiting for Ubers or waiting for, there was a lot of parents' Ubers this weekend. We noticed a lot of the parents coming up at two in the morning, so it was great to see that and just kind of, you know, they're driving. I thought I had to go get my kids, you know, like it was perfect. So it went really, really well that way. So I'd say by two-thirty, the streets are pretty quiet. We're still meddling around, you know, the, this year, obviously, the carnival people are tearing down. I don't even know what time they got done, but.
Six AM.
They were still working the night though, so that would be the other thing, but I think it went very well. I don't necessarily have an issue with it. Starting to tear it down at six o'clock, as long as they've got the resources. And our big concern before has always been morning church traffic and stuff like that, making sure it's open and fluid for them. And we can probably still accommodate some of that, so.
Did they do a nice job of cleaning up any debris that they left at the park where they were at? Anybody know?
There's, there's going to, there's one issue we're going to address yet, with some oil and stuff like that that you said you leave. They did take the car that caught the fire and got that out of here before they left, too, so.
Oh, you have to.
We're going to follow up.
Chris's front yard. Now, there's nothing like being at a kid's soccer tournament, getting all these text messages.
Turn it into some hurt. But we just found that out, like I said, today, so we're going to follow up with the owner of that and go there.
I was a little concerned about that.
Yeah.
I thought it was going to be there.
And actually, the owner of the company was very good for us to work with. He was very receptive of things. For those issues, he addressed them quickly and promptly and removed any problems that were there and took care of things quickly, so. I had no issues with it, but.
And was that the new loader in the parade?
It was.
Chief loves the backup part.
I had a guy next to me that worked in Iowa City, and he says they didn't even have one like that. So I work in Iowa City, we don't even have one like that.
The unit itself is much quieter than the UTV that I was driving around on all urgent days, until it backs up. And that's louder than the sirens.
We wanted you to hear it, Chief.
We heard it.
All right. And then the last thing is I have an emergency management meeting tomorrow night. Otherwise, that's it for my report.
Well, don't we have the disaster preparedness?
Yes, lunch. Seven to one, I think.
Any other things for council, community boards? Chris, can you mention your report?
I do have, for anybody that wants to take these to their business, it's the Crowley County Solar. It's just a placard that gives the dates for all of the workshops that will be hosted. Mount Vernon will host two. They're on there, and they'll be here in City Hall, so. And then other bit of good news is I finally got word that our quieted loan application is moving forward, so we can now apply for five hundred dollars to get that project moving forward. Still debating on whether or not some of these projects are going to have enough time to start. to start yet this fall. Chances are they probably won't, which means their spring will be extremely busy, that means the two trail projects potentially quiet zone.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks, and so Lynn County was also in town today, if anybody doesn't ask, and we're three Lynn County trucks here, taking shots of first streets. We are continuing to move along with partnering with that. Making, I continue to debate on Main Street and we continue to ask questions in the engineer's office, so we may bring this project back to you for just kind of discussion. I hate to leave anything behind done if we can avoid it, so we'll continue to ask questions, monitor and bring that back to you at some point, but in case that, you know, there were Lynn County trucks here taking measurements today, taking some elevation shots, except if you do get questions, they are here for that project.
And where are we with the waiting pass?
So good news is, is we believe that we've come to, I'll say, a soft agreement with the property owners on how we would rearrange. It looks like we are going to potentially move forward, but just filling that in, making some changes, putting in a new drive entrance for the farm entrance, basically, and we've got some good conversations with the owners, so I feel pretty confident with that, but it would be another, by the time we got it all set and done, it would be in spring as well.
Does anyone have to put that behind us?
I just want to say the CDG board meeting this month is tabled, so it won't be until August, but if you guys have feedback of how long that you've heard on the sound system, good or bad, please let me know so that we can share. I have had some of both, which is good.
And speaking of the CDG, it's a bit off topic, but congrats to Mike Smith for selling the balance and moving along, apparently still, he's working on order doing for you.
Transition.
Transition, but so, been fine since 1909, so congrats.
It sounds like nothing will change with morning coffees and everything else.
Can you ever try to change that? Glaciers are moving faster.
I would take the group on.
Well, with that said, anybody else have anything?
Try and get Solen and Sporting Stains.